Well, we're gonna start our work session for the city of Iowa City on April 2nd, 2024. It is just after 4:00 PM and our first item is to discuss related items to sister city programs and we have our deputy city manager here to lead us in that discussion, Redmond Jones. Welcome.
Mayor, I want to go down to the podium.
Great.
All right. So, I've been asked to talk a bit about Sister Cities program. We may have recalled a memo that I put out in IP talking about the Sister Cities program and had some supplemental information with that as well. May also remember a Friday update not too long ago where I found myself entertaining a delegation from China which basically kind of fell in our laps only with kind of like two weeks' notice and so it turned out to be very excellent exchange which opened the door to have more conversation about the Sister Cities program. So, I got a couple of slides that I want to take the council through and then we'll have a chance to have any kind of Q and A and any kind of discussion following that. So, introduction to Sister Cities. First, what is Sister Cities International? So, it was founded in 1956. Sister Cities International, also known as SEI, is a nonprofit citizen diplomacy network that creates and strengthens partnerships between the United States and international communities. SEI's mission is to promote peace through mutual respect, cooperation, and understanding one individual, one community at a time. President Eisenhower founded SEI in the post-World War II environment in the hopes of preventing another outbreak of a world war. For this reason, you'll find that SEI has a large number of its partnerships in those countries involved in that conflict, particularly Germany, Japan, Italy, France, and France. However, these partnerships are involving 140 countries and over 2,000 cities around the world. Eisenhower believed strongly in the concept of citizen diplomacy. What is citizen diplomacy? Well, according to the U.S. Council on Citizen Diplomacy, citizen diplomacy is a concept that individual, that each individual has the right, even the responsibility, to help shape U.S. foreign relations, one handshake at a time. Citizen diplomats can be students, teachers, athletes, artists, business people, manitarians, adventurers, and tourists. They are motivated by the responsibility to engage the rest of the world in meaningful, mutually beneficial dialogue. What is a sister city? Well, a sister city organization is a volunteer group of ordinary citizens who, with the support of their local elected officials, form long-term relationships with people and organizations in cities abroad. Each sister city organization is independent and pursues the activities and the mat, the themat, I practiced this word and I was gonna, knew I was gonna mess it up. The thematic areas that are important to them and their community, including municipal business, trade, and educational and cultural exchanges with their sister cities. Sister city organizations promote peace through people-to-people relationships. How do sister cities begin? Well, cities can and often do create their own criteria for requirements for a new sister city. All sister cities are formalized and by agreement between the two highest elected appointed officials. Cities and local programs are one of the ultimate, are the ones that ultimately decide whether to partner and under what circumstances they're willing to partner under. SEI offers, as a part of its membership, assistance in building partnerships, helping troubleshoot, explain the process, assist in narrowing down possible partners, and reaching out to cities on behalf and utilizing their network. Who can be a part of sister city program? Well, as these pictures show, anyone. City officials, students, professors, local businesses, religious groups, artists, musicians, local institutions of everyday citizens. The most successful and stable programs have volunteers across all these sectors. Sister city programs are not just for high school students or nonprofits or municipal government. It so happens that in these photos, actually was a small business person at the time, wasn't related to a government at that, at the moment, but was able to be a leader in sister cities and sister states. So, the top picture is, is a picture of me with the mayor of Francis Town in Bostwana. Interesting enough, they call their mayor's worship, so it took me a little bit to get used to that. And the bottom picture is the ambassador of Bostwana, which was entering a sister states relationship with the state of Iowa. So, regular people can make those kind of connections happen. How to structure sister city programs? Well, most of the sister city programs have a core group of volunteers for each partnership. It's not uncommon when multiple sister city partnerships are formed, for volunteer groups to focus on their specific sister city relationship while accepting support and guidance from an overarching local sister city hub or civic group that helps seek funding, assists with administrating exchanges or activities their sister city subgroups or committees may need. The best programs, again, have different layers of engagement. Diverse programs are typically more active, respond better to challenges, and are less likely to become dormant. How do sister cities begin, or partnerships begin? The relationship is formally created by the mayors or the highest elected officials in those communities. Two communities sign a memorandum of understanding establishing the sister cities partnership. Sister cities relationships may develop from several forms, including pre-existing marital relationships, trade relationships, historic connections, new immigration, new immigrant populations, demographic connections, shared challenges, faith-based groups, and personal experiences that range from work-study abroad to marriages. Frankly, there's just no one path in developing a sister city. What do sister cities do? Well, first, they conduct a cultural exchange that can be the center around arts, music, traditions, customs, performances, youth education and study abroad, virtual exchanges, learning opportunities, and leadership building. Sister cities also assist with community development, municipal and technical exchanges, best practices, policy exchanges, and staff, staff development opportunities. Just, you know, one example of that, I have a colleague that, after Desert Storm in Iraq, when they were setting up the local governments, city managers went down to help many of the local communities in Iraq establish local government. So, those opportunities come up in a number of different ways and that was a combination of partnership with sister cities and ICMA. Sister cities also assist with business and trade delegations and business incubation, import-export assistance, and other economic development opportunities and activities. Emphasizing leading programs do activities in all of these areas and understand that some of these areas may overlap with one another. Cities set their own agenda and all activities go both ways. So, in Iowa, in Iowa, there's about 30 communities that are currently in the sister cities relationship based on the SEI's website and these are just a few highlighted on the screen, but Corvile is one of them as well. So, there's a lot of more information that it provided, but there's also wanted to provide, I'm kind of focused on the diplomacy portion of it, but there's also economic advantages and benefits and although the study is a little dated, there's a study that was done in 2014 that did a third-party, did an examination of the economic benefits of some of the sister cities that were highlighted in that study. So, I just thought that would be interesting to share. And we also are lucky to have one of the sister city international board members really close by in Muscatine, John DeBeet. So, he said it was okay to share that, his phone number if you had any detailed questions for him as well. So, with that, is there any questions?
Well, I appreciate you kind of taking counsel through what it means to be a sister city. One of the questions I have is, do we know if Corvile is an official sister city?
Yes, they, they are and have been for eight years. Their activity levels, as you would expect, is it matches the energy of the volunteers and so you would hear about it more than other times, but they have been formed and active for eight years.
Who is their, I'm sorry, who is their sister?
I don't, I won't want, don't want to try and pronounce it, but it's a city, it's a city in China.
Okay. And is there an ask or is this just informative? I know that there's, there's interest in, in creating.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think, yeah, I think of the council, a part of this presentation is just to say to the council, hey, we certainly can go into this opportunity of becoming a sister city. One, we would need to establish what will be our goal for the program and then if we want to move forward, then there would need to be a decision based on how will we set this up? Will this be a community-run type of sister city where we would have volunteers from the community? There's always the potential of having council appointees on there. So, I do think that that would be a part of this discussion, should we want to go there? I did have one question about membership for the Sister City International. Is there a cost for that? Do we know that information?
Yes, and it's under $1,000.
Okay. So, they're minimal?
Yeah.
Yep. I know that Mayor Protem talked about sister cities in the past when she was on council and I think we had a 2019 discussion on the council. My memory serves me that it seemed like back then, at least from my understanding, it was going to be a lot of up, a lot of work on the staff part, but it's very clear to me that there are more than one option to be, be in a sister city and.
But it was not right then, Mayor. I remember I brought this up, but it's completely different than now because I'm the only one who was talking about it. I was talking about this is not going to be through the staff, it could be a nonprofit organization and actually I went back to the video and you can go to that, but it wasn't any interesting, nobody was, the staff was not in board, the council was not in board. I'm glad to see this happening, but this is kind of the thing sometime when the staff in board things will go through and when one council member brings something, the same thing, I brought it here and I said, we want to do it and it been rejected by both, staff and council. I'm glad to say it here, but also it's very disappointing that when somebody like me brings something, it's always denied. So, I'm glad you guys are bringing it.
I do think it's a great opportunity if we should move forward with it and I think some of the things that I'm, you know, learning through this process is certain, we'll have to determine what communities and maybe that's up to the, you know, the, if we should move forward with this, the body that is developed will have to determine, you know, who was the first sister city they'll develop a relationship with. But there are a lot of benefits from having a sister city. You talked about some of the exchanges cities can have, but can you speak a little bit to maybe business interactions as well as students, whether they be in high school or in college?
Yeah, sure. So, I think probably the, the one benefit that you'll see almost, almost immediately is the opportunity for exchanges at the student, student level and that's both university and high school level. I know just China is one, one example. There's a mandate that the president of China, Xi, has, has mentioned having 50,000 exchange opportunities with the U.S. in particular. That's a mandate from China government, so they're very eager, all of the smaller subdivisions of government are very eager to find those exchange opportunities because it's a mandate from, from the over, over their version of national government, federal government. So, so those are, those opportunities and I've shared a little experience that I had as an individual business person before that with the city of Davenport. St. Ambrose was always taking advantage of, of student exchange programs. On the business side, and there's always the big, the big opportunity that economic development, you kind of, you know, focus in on. I know at one time Volkswagen was looking at a potential auto plant and Davenport was in that conversation and a lot of it had to do with the connection with sister cities. That discussion put Davenport on the map for Volkswagen to consider. It didn't wind up happening, but that sister city relationship had garnered that conversation and there was direct communications about that opportunity. From a smaller, small businessman standpoint, I was working in a consulting firm that worked with the co-op of farmers that found themselves with a lot of soy because one of their markets couldn't accept it and a whole new market was able to be developed to take that soy and that was with Bostwana. So, that, that was a business trade opportunity that, that came up through sister cities. So, there's, there's opportunities to even for professional development scene where if there's like water sewer challenges or landfill challenges that communities can exchange professionals to learn and from each other about those particular challenges and hopefully work on solutions together or if not, give insights to the communities that need those insights to better improve services. So, all those opportunities come, but it takes an environment for those things and a lot of times there's opportunities that come up that you, you won't, you know, recognize when you write it all out, but you, you place yourself in a situation where you can take advantage of those opportunities when they arise.
Do we know if there is a, a group of citizens who have developed a desire to do this and want to organize as a not-for-profit? Or is this something that, I guess, we're learning that we could be the organizers or we could support another group? What do you know?
Well, I, I think both Mayor Protem and I have been in conversation, maybe you can speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, with Tony, what's, what's his last name?
Johnson?
Johnson, Tony Johnson, yeah. He, he reached out and he have interest of putting together a group of people and forming like commissioner or number of the organization kind of to, to lead this for the city. So, maybe one time we can come and ask him to come and speak about how you're going to be doing this. But yes, there is a group of people want to do this.
And he's been involved in sister cities in other communities, but he is living here in Iowa City and also there is Denby, Demi, sorry, Demi from the University of Iowa, who is very active with international relations and also has great interest in being supportive of this effort and I think some of the counselors probably know Demi in, in several ways.
And last time when I was trying to do, there is Kirkwood Community College, like the international students and the University of Iowa International Student, they was very interesting, those I can have like some kind of seeking students through that programs.
At what stage in the process then would the city, like, when would we be looking at taking some kind of action? Do they, I was trying to look through the different possible, like forming a corporation, doing it through the city, like the three or four different ways and the, the material you shared with us. If we have a group of people, do they sort of get the ball rolling, form, and then we give them affirmation? Do we start off with the sister city agreement with the understanding that then somebody local here will take that ball and run with it? I'm just, just want to know what the timeline could potentially look like.
And I hate to be elusive, but it actually depends. It could, it could be all the above on how we go about structuring it and it can also be more than one sister city. So, there's, there's, in, in that two kit that I provided shows potential structures on how that might look like. But, but again, it's usually formatted or formalized with a memo of understanding that would come from the mayor, with the, the mayor of the two communities coming together and formalizing. So.
But that's after we, as a council, establish the program itself.
Yes.
Say, yes, we want the city to have that program.
That, that was my question.
Yes, that's, that's.
You can certainly do that and how full that's filled out, it could be an evolutionary process, right? So, especially if, if you want to have multiple sister cities and multiple groups, they tend to recommend that you have volunteers that focus on that particular relationship. So, if, if there is an interest in China, citizens interested in China exchanges, they kind of zoom in on that. If there's interest in folks in Sudan or, or there's connections there, there's a group of citizens that will focus in on that relationship. I know I also got a phone call from someone that was interested in relationship with, in Kosovo. So, there's, there's all those kinds of opportunities and, and those groups come together to share overall highlights and big picture and usually there's maybe a city staff person that assists overall picture and helping prepare budgets and helping them with basics to operate.
What would, moving into that, and I know that it is and it depends, because you were saying it's, can be as active as the participants are, what would be the lift for staff or is that too, and it depends on the level of engagement?
Yeah, I, I think that's, had been talked about. This certainly can be driven by volunteers. Usually those, that's the most successful models, right?
Okay, yeah.
The most active models and I think staff is, is really there to help with some things like.
As needed.
Managing the relationship with Sister Cities International, might be a contract relationship, putting together a memo of understanding, those kind of administrative type of tasks, I think staff would be good with and that would potentially be pretty light.
Sure.
Depending on how active the groups are.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, I recall the conversation in 2019, I wasn't on the council at the time, but was, you know, attending the meetings and, and watching that and I think one of the questions that was in my mind and at the time is, that I bring up again is just since then, the world has changed a lot and I think international relationships have changed a lot in the way in which different, you know, sort of actors in all the different spheres that may interact across borders have changed a lot and I have some concerns with frankly, an Eisenhower era program that from the research that I've done doesn't necessarily, you know, there isn't like a subject matter area, right? It's very open, as you were saying, it's very much just whatever individuals may want to relate with each other on. So, I personally would be very hesitant to have the city support that or be involved in that without a better, without maybe some guardrails, without a better subject matter understanding. I think, you know, we are very over capacity as staff and as elected officials and it sounds like this is something that if there's interest in the community for volunteers to head up, they absolutely could, but I see some real potential pitfalls with a totally wide-open international relationship program, just given the political environment that we're in, quite frankly. I think there are international networks, for example, if this was something that our leadership, the mayor, Mayor Protem, wanted to participate in, you know, the, I think it's called the United Council of Local Governments or Governments and Local Units, it's the U.C., CGLU, sorry, my brain, that has, you know, much more like orientation around democracy and information sharing in ways that are intended to support human rights and sort of the universality, universality of what I think our values here in Iowa City are. So, I realize that's kind of amorphous, what I'm saying, but I have some concerns with a really wide-open relationship with some random city in some country.
I would agree with that.
I do think that a part of what the council can do is set up those guardrails that you talked about. So, what is the goal of the program that we're wanting and, and also what is the, you know, what is the makeup of the group? So, it does not have to be with no parameters to it.
I think it has to be with parameter, you know? And I don't know what, you know, Council Burgess means by random cities because I think there is an evaluation like on that, not like any city will be eligible, I think, and not like there is some, not any country will be eligible and all this we're going to be like taken in consideration, I hope, on the like regulation of who should be sister city.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that it would just be like, we wouldn't even know, just be totally random. What I meant was, I wouldn't want to approach something, I wouldn't want to use our resources for something like this that at this stage doesn't have intentionality around subject matter. That's what I meant.
I think all this is going to be like learning experience before we can even have an agreement with a sister city, we have to come up with all these parameters and everything and everybody agree into it and after that, we will be.
And I think if we can see where that fits in our current committed strategic plan goals and what we're going to be taking off the table to expend the energy to do that, I'd be glad to have that conversation. I just don't see that right now.
I think a part of it is, we can, and we heard from Redmond that he can help with this process at bringing us some initial information and if the council is more leaning towards kind of this community-led effort, then we can determine what is the council's involvement. So, if the council wants to have the community do whatever they, you know, with some parameters, work within their scope and then they want to identify a sister city that they want to partner with, then they can come, the council can have it where they come and get approval from the council after they've done that approval themselves. from the council after they've done that approval themselves, as well as what would those relationships entail.
And also my question will be to Redmond, you, you've been involved with like sister cities before, and now we are thinking this is not like a staff-led sister city program. It will be like outside, like a number of it or group of people we're going to lead this. Can you tell me if that's going to be the model, how much will be on the staff?
Well, well, my experience was when, when I was involved, I was, and again, small business person, I had a meeting with Davenport staff at that time. They prepared an agenda for a meeting. There was a board, and I presented to them. They said, yes, go ahead and, and pursue it. And that was the last I seen of them.
Oh, okay. That is not.
In that situation, it was all driven, of course, there was a group of, of, of individuals that were private individuals that had organized meetings with the governor, organized meetings with the, the mayor or the, his worship in Botswana. And when it came down to having a document ready and, and prepared, then took that back to the staff, staff got that to the mayor, they reviewed it, and, and that ultimately came together. So in, in my experience, in that situation, the way that was structured, staff had very minimal.
So we don't need to take something from their plate so we can have this inside. So I.
Now, opposed on the other side, forming a, a city commission with staff being assigned to it, having minutes taken up on every meeting, you know, that, that's, that's on the heavy side. But the example that I had familiar, familiar with was, was very minimal.
Thank you.
It sounds like some of this hinges upon, it sounds like there's a few members of the community who are interested, which is, that's a great start. Part of this might hinge on, is there enough to form a body of community members who would be willing to do that? So it seems like, like, I don't know if there's like beyond the couple of names that have been mentioned, if that's, that seems like probably a next, you know, a next step, if this was to move forward, is to make sure of that. I wonder two things. One thing, talking about resource allocation, if there are things that the city would need to fund as part of this? I don't know if there's, I skimmed through this, I didn't see anything, but I'm just want to make sure that there's some sort of enrollment fee or a certain amount of financial contributions for travel and things that are customary with the city participation in this program. And then if, as I saw in here too, there was, you can make your own bylaws. Is that something that the, if we have a community group do it, could the city still help with the formation of those bylaws? Which might, I'm, I'm kind of not 100% sure, but if I understood some of what Councilor Burgess was talking about, putting some of those guardrails, would that be a place to do it? So that second question might be a little harder to answer, so maybe the first one, resource allocation related question.
Yeah, well, I, I was speaking to the membership aspect of it. It wouldn't be the membership of the smaller citizen groups. It would be more so the cities take, having a membership with Sister City International. And, and under that, those, those small groups can access assistance from Sister Cities International. Sister City International also plays a role in helping stake out cities. If like, hey, we want to have a relationship, we just don't know what, but we might have certain values or whatever, human rights values or whatever those are, we want to find a community that reflects those kind of values. Sister Cities uses its network and its connections to find that appropriate mix if you so desire. Or those relationships could happen from grassroots. I, I mentioned immigrant communities. You could have just folks that have a family relation connection that want to have a connection to their, their homeland or what have you, that it can come up through there as well. So there's a lot of, a lot of, of room. And basically, the city can customize how it wants to go about that relationship. And no relationship is forced on any community. It is definitely volunteer on both sides.
So I guess I'll just say some, some general thoughts. I, I do think there's, there's plenty of people in this community who would be able to and who would be ecstatic to be part of something like this. I think it's worth pursuing. And when I, when I say pursuing, I see that as, I think that you've portrayed it to the public and to the council here. Basically, we started out, we lend resources, you know, minor resources to help facilitate things at times, but we generally make an independent organization. I think that a great first step, unless you've already done this, or, you know, unless people have had this conversation already, would be to reach out to organizations like the J C U N A. Global Ties Iowa does a lot of this stuff, too. And they would also be very well-connected to the, to a network of people who might be interested in being leaders on this type of, type of project. But I do think it's something that's worth us doing. I do think it's something that's worth having continuing conversations about, being intentional, as Councilor Burgess has said, about the, you know, the confines of what our relationships are. But, you know, broadly speaking, I'm, I'm very supportive.
Can you talk a little, one of the guardrails that I'm interested in is duration. Can you talk about, like, if this is a program that we enter into and it's, let's say we lose community interest, is it easy to get out of? Or is this something that we are forever a sister city?
I, I have, can I have to ask a question? I've not seen a sister city, well, no, yes, I have, actually. I was going to say I hadn't seen a sister city dissolved, but actually Des Moines just dissolved a relationship that they had with the city in Russia. So that, that, that can happen. And this is, is a memo of understanding, so these are agreements that aren't like contractually binding. There's not like damages or anything if you, if you choose to decide to dissolve on either side of that partnership or, so that, that can be done. I don't normally see that happen, though. Most of the time, if there's inactivity, it just becomes dormant until another group picks it back up and, and reactivates it. So.
And I would say that just aside from just Des Moines, that was a very widespread response to the, the war in Ukraine. Was a lot of sister cities around the world. And this was really the first time since the program began that that really was observed, that the sister cities agreements were, were terminated.
I'll also add that the city of Iowa City continues to have international relations, often with various people coming to the city to look, you know, look at a lot of things. This year alone, I've hosted three, been a part of three international groups here in City Hall. And so it's very, and we're only in April. So it's, it's very normal for the city to have international relations. And one of the things I remember, because I've been on council since 2018, but there's been a lot of interest in our, just to see our water plant. So people have done tours there, they've done tours. I think housing is also something of interest for folks. So there are lots of opportunities that we've already had. And I think this just maybe allows for our community to have one point of contact where they're coming back with policy questions. The last one that we had here, Global Ties was the one that kind of hosted. They're from Georgia, but the topic was promoting human rights and civic engagement for the LGBT QI communities. And this was in Georgia. And so we continue to have this international opportunity. One of the questions I had when I first started this engagement again was, we already have these, you know, opportunities and connections, why would we need to become an official sister city if we still have this opportunity without being labeled a sister city? I think there's some benefits to being labeled a sister city, is recognized by communities when you say you're a sister city. But also I think it just gives them memoranda of this is who we're connecting with in the U.S. and, you know, internationally. And when there are needs that come up, you have your sister city to reach out to and say, hey. And it may not be city-related, it could be something, you know, totally different from, you know, interactions with the city that needs to happen. So I wonder if the council, because a part of what, you know, today is, you know, we have the discussion, and I wonder if the council is, if the majority are comfortable with what I would consider to be the next steps, which would be really to bring back to council, you know, the initial information from the sister city, because that's who we were, Sister City International. We aren't even talking specific cities at this point, communities. So it would be if we're, you know, if the majority is in agreement, then we say to staff, you know, move forward with the next steps in developing a sister city relationship and bringing that information back.
I, I would say also to, you know, just be, you know, comprehensive in, in what we're looking at here, and also include like an assessment of the, the program or organization that Councilor Burgess brought up as well.
If I understand the program that she brought up, that was more for individual elected officials to be a part, but not for the community to be a part.
Sure, okay.
So I do see that as just a different opportunity, but certainly one that we can certainly continue to look in, like, outside of a council meeting.
And I think just with the questions that we've had about our level of investment and what that would take, I sort of saw this presentation as the initial, that initial, here's how you might go about it if you wanted to. I think what I would like to see as a next step is for community members who are interested to say, hey, yeah, and we have some ideas about what the city could be. I think, you know, we've gotten the information related to the international sister city organization that's been provided to us. And I don't know, I guess I'm just not sure how much further we could go on that if we want it to be a community-driven thing. I guess I'm saying I want it to be a community-driven thing.
And I, I agree with you, Councilor Burgess, that I would like it to be a community-driven thing that we support, that we empower. But I don't, the idea of it being perhaps another commission or something, I feel like we would burden the staff too much. But also, we have a hard time getting enough commissioners for all of our commissions as it is, and giving them enough attention that they deserve. So I, I'm kind of not in favor of adding a commission for this, but if there's a community group that comes forward, I would very much support empowering them and be flexible, I guess, with which, how they choose their city and how they operate. But to see the community come to us would be, to me, the next step I'd like to see.
I, I guess.
I think some of the people who are going to with this committee together are already being involved in sister cities, so they know like examples. So we have an example, and maybe the, the community and the city can just look into those example and see like how we're going to add to it or modify it, or just see if we can adopt it or we may maybe change it.
Sure.
Yeah, that's like a start point.
And I don't think there'll be a shortage of interested community members. And it will not, what we're, was being proposed is not a commission. So the, the, the council won't even be having, outside of maybe the initial, should we choose to be a part of that initial setup? This will all be on that community.
Yeah, and even if, if we, they, we need like somebody to be always in there. So if this like burden on the council, I will be more than happy to be that person.
I, I'm thinking about a couple of things here. You know, my, my personal thought is that I think that council, or at the very least the city, should have a role in forming this group as a community group, right? You know, put together the structure, handoff, right? So, you know, give it the guardrails that we're talking about, give it a, a vision, goal for existence in cooperation with people in the community who want to do this. And then, you know, we, we provide some institutional support to make sure that that, that structure is successful in the long term, and then we can cooperate from there.
Should be like, you just said earlier, it should be like community or somebody said community.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And it will be assistant, I think, support from the staff by like logistic and maybe rules and regulations.
Absolutely.
All this, yeah.
That's, that's the way I see it, right? As we, 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 we help the community start it up. And, you know, from there, we just provide that logistical support as is necessary. Another statement that was mentioned that I didn't quite sit right with me was have the community come to us. We have a hard enough time getting the community to come to this room. So I, I think that we should, as a council, if this is something that we choose to pursue, we should give clear directive to kind of get the word out to relevant interested groups like J C U N A, like Iowa U N A, like Global Ties, and have them kind of put the feelers out as well, or request that they put the feelers out as well to, to try to help get this going. But to just expect, oh yeah, people should just come to us, I just want to make sure that we're, we're doing just a little bit more than that.
And this is sort of a yes and. It sounds to me like there's already a groundswell of some people who are.
Yeah.
In the community and are already invested in doing this. So I think that it's, in looking through the memo and the, oh, good lord, sorry. And the attachments that are, elbow dial. Through the attachments that are in the packet, that it seems like there is already a framework for the types of ways, right? There could be an association that's super loose, that seems like we might want to have a little bit more structure, too. There's a commission. We sound somewhat like that may not be the right way to go, but then there's also a nonprofit. So I mean, there's, there's options that are, it's, in some ways, I think that we've, we're ahead of where this initial rollout that, that is incredibly informative. But it sounds like there's been all this background work and that there had been work prior to this as well. So I think we just need to tap into that and coalesce it. And then we can find out as well. So it's a yes and, where we do talk to and, and put the word out to these other folks to see if there's interest in, from these other groups in helping support this. But I think we really need to start with the germ and the core of the people who've already been expressing interest in it, right? Who are already here in the community, if I'm understanding, the background that, that Councilor Sala has been saying. So I'm agreeing.
So for clarity.
Yeah.
Because I think our staff needs to walk away with, you know, what is the, the consensus of the council? So if I was to kind of paraphrase what I've heard up here, is there can be work done at preparing the city of Iowa City to become a sister city with bringing back to council all the documents that were mentioned for some of those guardrails and just our operating, the operations for this community organization that's going to be formed. And my thought is, I wonder if this council, and we don't have to determine this today, if we wanted to, you know, give a number for how many community members this should have, and if this should have some council appointees. I don't feel strongly about it, but.
I, I personally think it might be unwise for us to set those numbers at this point. I think something that is at least important to me is that, you know, we, we, we set the, the guardrails, and that ultimately either council or, you know, however it is decided, you know, is the, is the final decision for we're going to enter a sister cities agreement. That's really what's important to me personally.
And all this work, I think we leave it to the people who are really having experience on this. And they can put up the numbers, they know like which one work in other city, which one does not work. And maybe they can just set the ground for that and bidding it does. If we saw like something really odd on there, we can talk about it. But let us just make the people who are working on this to continue, give them the green light if we are inconsistent. But let us just make the people who are working on this to continue, give them the green light if we are inconsistent.
So it sounds like what you're mentioning, certainly there could be some work with Tony and with Demi, just to work with Redmond on some of the language. And then it'd come back to council, the proposal of our bylaws. And then it sounds like we would then determine if we want to enter into the sister city international agreement contract. And then from there, we'll set up this community group that will have whatever parameters we've set for them at that point. So we're not all the way down the road with the steps, but I think we have a a temporal end in sight. So, okay. Any other questions for Redmond? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, clarification. We're going to move on to item number two, clarification of agenda items.
I think I will be accusing myself from 10B or 10, 10B, I think.
I think to pull 5B from consent.
I'm sorry, can you say that again, Councilor Don?
I'd like to pull 5B from consent.
It's not 10B. This is 10H. I would be accusing myself.
Any other items?
Appropriate time to talk about 9A's supplemental information now or during the meeting? We received a protest of rezoning.
During the meeting.
Discuss it during the meeting or now?
Well, I'll certainly want to, I'm happy to do it here and then we'll certainly want to make it clear at the formal, but what Councilor Mo is referring to is that the property owner involved in 9A has filed a protest that would necessitate a super majority of council in order to approve the rezoning. That is six out of seven. And when the mayor turns to his left and right to see if there's an informal consensus, to see whether a consult with PNC is warranted or not, he will be looking for six heads to be nodding or not nodding instead of the normal four.
Yeah, so typically, you know, as long as I get to four, I really don't have to look at both sides. For this, I'm going to need everyone to kind of signal if they will be in support of PNC's recommended vote. Any other items from the formal agenda to note? All right, we'll go to information packet discussions, March 21st.
I wanted to highlight IP2, just the development and permit trends. Just wanted to highlight that, you know, we have this target of developing 3,500 units. And according to that report, we are really, really short. And so something that I know all of us care about is providing housing in the city and it's something we need to keep working at.
I was just going to add that our focus has to be multifaceted.
Yes.
And that so much of what we discuss, and rightfully so, because we are under a real sense of urgency, if not crisis, about affordable housing. But we are also trending in a situation of crisis where we will not have enough housing across the board. And that does a lot for the health of any city in the long term. And so it's just sort of a reminder as an overall thing, not to council, but to the public, that we have to remain laser focused on affordable housing and we also have to encourage and find ways to support more housing across all price points so that Iowa City can retain its health in the long term.
And I would agree. I think it's looking at all facets of housing and including affordable housing. As Councilor Mo mentioned, kind of the trends that we're seeing. So if permitting trends from the 2020 through 2023 continue, the city is expected to only meet 77% of its demands for new, new housing by 2030 with a deficit of more than 1,000 dwelling units. Now, that's just new. So I do think that we are definitely in a position where we're going to have to look at every opportunity that, that we can to make sure that we have housing in this community. It is, not only do we need single family dwellings, but we need four bedrooms. That's a deficit.
Yeah, families for family, yeah.
For families. And also single, you know, one bedroom dwellings as well. I, so it's multifaceted, I think. As we continue this journey, we're just going to have to look at various opportunities and be open to maybe not always the status quo.
I think we just need to go ahead and put a goal by 13 years that how many affordable housing we need in this city. You know, now the market price and even, you know, section eight voucher and the market price is completely off. Three bedroom is $2,000 now. And, you know, family for three bedroom, this is could be just a family of five only. So three bedroom. And just talk about family of six, seven. And I think we have a lot of low income in this community. They need that. And being like through the organization I'm volunteering with, we house people and we cannot really find affordable housing. And I don't know if the council know, but there is 20 people who have section eight voucher of 14, I think. They would be displaced, you know, because the, the, the city, the housing authority terminate their lease with the landlord. The landlord is not a good landlord. So whatever step the housing authority took is great step and it should be done. But those people are renting for three bedroom for 1,400. Now looking for another, you know, place is $2,000. And the voucher says around 1,400 to 1,700. So it's not enough. I don't know. This is really crisis. Affordable housing, we've been talking about it. Every single one in this council can be on affordable housing. But we need really to be bold about it and just try to make sure we have more affordable housing in this community.
We're going to move on to information packet, March 28th.
I'd like to talk about the, I don't know which IP it is, the memo from the, so sorry, Neighborhood Development Services Director. If we could just have a little bit more information as to how these numbers came forward or how they were developed, that would be really appreciated. Yeah, Tracy, I think you got a contact from Ellen McCabe with the.
The distribution formula.
And that's IP6.
IP6.
Let me pull up the memo. We've had the Affordable Housing Fund since fiscal year 17. We've had the existing formula, distribution formula since fiscal year 20. You're going to see an increase in fiscal year 25 of 30,000. So we've increased affordable housing budget in the proposed budget by 3%. So that's additional 30,000. Council is funding, we've committed more money to the winter shelter. We're going to commit 100,000. So that required in addition, us to look at our distribution formula and how we incorporate the winter shelter. And I did just get the winter shelter report up through the end of February. They accommodated shelter for over 5,000 nights of shelter in the winter shelter and overflow of 429 South Gate. So as soon as we get the final numbers for March, up till March 18th, you'll be getting that in your next IP packet. So to accommodate that 100,000, we looked at where we could take and where we could arrange the numbers, the amount. Right now, the Housing Trust Fund gets a lion's share of funding. They get 70% of the prior existing formula. So they were being allocated 700,000. So we looked at what we could do. We reduced the Lytech portion by 50,000. The housing, or the Housing Trust Fund gets more administrative dollars on their regular pot, the $500,000 set aside. So we took it from the Lytech. If there is a Lytech application, a low income housing tax credit application, they can always also utilize the regular set aside, that 500,000, and they have done that. We also don't always get a Lytech application every year. So sometimes, you know, we might get one once every three years or that we fund or one that moves forward. So that's, so we took 50,000 from them. We looked at the opportunity fund. We didn't want to decrease the opportunity fund because we don't know what opportunities we're going to get throughout the year. So and we've had history. We purchased 724 Ronald Street for the Housing Fellowship and Partnership with Iowa City School District for the student-built house. We use these funds for the relocation assistance for Forest View for those that weren't eligible for ARPA. And we used it to fund additional security deposit assistance during the pandemic. So you get various needs that come at us during the year and it's nice to have this pot of money to use for things that that we have no other pot of funds for. Healthy homes, we have seen a reduction in referrals from school-based clinics. So we reduced that by 30,000, but we still wanted to keep some of that fund because when we go out and do, we do a home CDBG or group project, we find that a lot of tenants, we're finding it common that children will have asthma, adults have COPD. So there's things that we can't do with those federal funds. So we'll use it to do a new HVAC system, new air conditioning. We'll use it to replace old carpet with vinyl plank flooring. So we still want the flexibility to use those funds. So when you do get a referral, when we do see that problem, we have the funds available. We've also used that funds to help the Housing Fellowship with their radon mitigation because it addressed air quality. The placement services, we're finding a huge demand remains for security deposits. They're running out of their funds way before the end of the fiscal year. So we didn't want to take money from there. In fact, we increased it by 10,000. The landlord risk mitigation, we have capitalized that fund. Shelterhouse administers it. We've not had a claim on that fund yet. So in our distribution formula, we recommended that. We look at the prior year and if no claims have been allocated, we spend that balance on security deposit assistance. Since I've been at the city for the last 20 years, it's always been a large barrier for somebody to get into housing is to come up with that initial security deposit assistance. And Crisis Center, Community Crisis Services had to reduce. They ran out of funds. They reduced it to a cap of $1,000 and they're, they're requesting additional funds and we find the need is there. The emergent situation, we wanted to keep that at 50,000 too, because we don't know what emergent situations are going to happen. So in the past, we've used this funds for relocation assistance to income-qualified residents to move to a redevelopment project or mobile home park closure. We did, we use these funds for the Hawkeye Mobile Home Park, the relocation assistance, not only the assistance, but hiring a nonprofit to help them with housing placement services. We use this fund for winterization of mobile homes in Forest View when there's no other source of funds. So we really wanted to keep that pot of money available for the emergencies that we see. If there's any pot of money in healthy homes or emergent situation at the end of the year, they go into the opportunity fund. So it stays into housing and it's available for housing. I think the balance in the opportunity fund right now is 208,000, but that's also a carryover fund when we had land banking. So, and then the 10% winter shelter would be 100,000. So that's how we came up with a million 30,000.
One quick question for you. So if the Lytech program, if you don't get an application for the year, what happens with that allotted funds?
It stays in that pot. And then I think we did amendment with the trust fund that after the second year, if there's not a Lytech application, they can use that money in the regular fund.
What did we use the $50,000 afoot all for emergent situations last year?
So in fiscal year 23, we used it because of the home art funds. We're so delayed, we could not get approval from HUD. And so for the United Action for Use for their Transitional Living Program, we spent money. We spent 12,000. And then at the end of 23, we had 38,000 left over. So that went to the opportunity fund.
How's that been spent?
Opportunity fund, there's two, there's a balance of 208,000.
208,000.
208. The year before that, we used it for Habitat to fix, repair, weatherization of Forest View mobile homes and Center for Worker Justice for application assistance. And we only had a remaining balance of 15,000. The year before that, we used it for community assistance provided for emergency assistance and eviction diversion program. So we've used it for different things that there was no money or available or other pot of funds, or they wouldn't have time to wait for another allocation or a funding cycle.
You were, let me just, just the clarifying question. You were very clear in explanation, but somehow my brain fizzled. So you're allotting 75,000 in the opportunity fund, but it rolls over if it hasn't, right?
Yeah, and it started off with.
And the emergent, emergent money also can roll into it if it hasn't been, right? So there's currently 208. Does that whole, I guess, I'm curious about what happens to the excess of the 75,000? If currently there's 208,000 in the.
The reason why we have such the balance is because this is the former land banking funds.
So you said that.
It was in that money or that's the reason why we have such a large balance.
Leftover.
Yeah, and the only, yeah, that was, we started land banking back in fiscal year 17. We only bought that one land, our lot in Lindeman. And we used to allocate a lot more. So all that balance remained. It's still in there. And then we add 75,000 to it every year based on this distribution formula. And if there's any balance left over at the end of the year for healthy homes or the emergent situations, then we apply that to opportunity funds.
Okay. So, but there is less 75,000. There is a chunk of money that was from land banking that's just sitting there for.
Well, we bought the Ronald Street lot with it.
That's what I mean, is for those.
It's for opportunities that come up through the year.
Okay.
So we can take advantage of those opportunities.
And it just, that money will continue to stay there and roll?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Once it's in the Affordable Housing Fund, it stays for affordable housing.
Okay.
And for the, for the Lytech programs, I guess when I ask you that the Housing Trust Fund, they also have application, they come to them for Lytech programs?
Yes, they have one set annual allocation for Housing Trust Fund or for Lytech projects. But I talked to Ellen today, you can apply for Lytech projects anytime during the year. They have four. They have a quarterly application. But one is dedicated to low income housing tax credit applications. Because the state only typically accepts one funding more a year. Sometimes we have applications, sometimes we don't.
What is the advantage to us? Let's say like, be realistic about this budgeting for an emergency situation versus addressing that problem as it arises.
Sorry, what was the question?
So the Emergent Situation Fund is $50,000, right? What is the, the advantage? Like, what's the calculus that goes into place? For us to budget for that rather than utilize that towards things and then address them additionally as council, like amend the budget in the future as that problem arises?
They're for those, basically, we advertise it. It's for those opportunities or those challenges that we get. Like, we just use it for big brothers, big sisters. That emergent, like something has happened outside of their control. They don't have time to apply for a funding round. Those things do happen from time to time. So we have funded, I think, houses into homes, Center for Worker Justice, big brothers, big sisters. So if you don't have that funding available and budgeted, that means each of those requests have to come to you and then you have to find some way to finance it. So that's just, those are funds that are available.
Okay. And also can you talk about landlord risk mitigation with that?
The landlord risk mitigation is a fund that is established so for landlords who are going to provide housing for like our emergency vouchers, mainstream vouchers, rapid rehousing, those people that are, had the most barriers to housing, that they can guarantee up to, I think it's 3,500 to the landlord, that if they're missing rent due to client leaves early or tenant leaves early, they damage the unit, there's legal fees that we will reimburse up to 3,500 so that they'll accept that tenant and that we can get them housed.
And who is housing that money?
Shelterhouse is administering it, but we've had no claims in fiscal year 24 to date. So the money sits there. So what we're proposing that, we look at, so for fiscal year 25, if that 30,000 is still sitting in a shelter house and there's been no claims, then we allocate that to, to security deposit assistance.
And I'm sorry, can you just repeat, who is eligible for it? Because I never heard about it.
Okay. It's for those landlords that rent to people with emergency vouchers, mainstream vouchers, rapid rehousing, those tenants that usually that they're coming through the continuum of care, the coordinated entry process into, that have those vouchers. So not just, we haven't opened it up to just any housing choice voucher tenant. So it's those clients that have significant barriers to housing and that we find that landlords are reluctant to house.
But what about the people who are sometime like new immigrants who don't, when they go and apply for housing, they tell them you have new credit, you have to put all this like, sometime they ask them to pay six months toward of rent or pay three months deposit or. deposit or something like that. Are those going to be eligible for this landlord risk medications?
Not right now, because this is just a pilot program, and we were seeing how well it went. So we're limited to landlords that were willing to accept those higher-risk emergency mainstream vouchers, because those are people who serve people with, that are unhoused or that they've had like a series of homelessness. Now, the folks that you're talking about would be eligible for security deposit assistance, the Community Crisis Services, so they could go to community and apply for security deposit assistance.
Yeah, I know. They've been amazing, but they only have 10,000 limit. And that's not going to help. I guess, I mean, how long this program been around? Because you said just this pilot.
Just this past year.
One year?
Yeah. It went, last year, this is fiscal year '24 is the first year.
I think it's, it's really good. And, but I know it's, it's just only 30,000.
I think as it goes, we'll have to tweak it. We will adjust eligibility criteria. But it's only to reassure the landlord that if something happens, that, you know, they don't pay rent, the tenant leaves, the tenant damages the apartment, that we will, we will reimburse that claim.
Yeah. The only thing is, is only like available for certain people who work with the shelter house, but people outside that.
Coordinated entry probably, and our emergency mainstream vouchers.
Yeah.
And rapid rehousing folks.
I think we just need to open it. Because sometime you said, if it's not, nobody used it and it's all over, you know. So if nobody is using it, and if it is somebody outside that circle needed it.
Yeah. Well, nobody submitted a claim yet.
Yeah. But how the people going to submit a claim if they cannot grow through like coordinated entry?
You're, you're referring to the landlord. No landlord has submitted a claim.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, that's positive.
That's really good. Yeah.
Yeah. That means that the tenants have been dependable, paid things, not damaged, enough for them to go through the hassle.
I mean, not that many clients have been, I don't believe we've, that many have committed yet, landlords have committed. We'll have to talk to Chrissy about how we get more landlords involved, how we advertise it, how we market it, how we ensure that the landlord knows about the program and that they have greater assurances that we will come through with these funds if there is a claim. But right now, no claims have been submitted against the fund by a landlord.
And is this like going to come by, the fund will be like just as a deposit and it will come back? Or if the, if the person paid everything, they did not do anything bad?
No. If, if, if they are a tenant that follows all rules, they don't damage the unit, nothing was paid by us, nothing left. We were just basically a guarantee or kind of like insurance that if something happens, we'll pay for the loss. So if nothing happens, then nothing comes out of that fund.
Yeah. Yeah. That's what I mean, like, but no other landlord outside this could do that.
Not right now. It's limited.
That's what I want to know.
Yep.
So this is kind of a pivot, so I don't want to interrupt the, the current. Okay. So at the, at the top of your sort of talking to us, you mentioned that there was, what, approximately 5,000 nights of shelter?
Of shelter, provided it. Winter shelter and overflow at 429 South Gate.
Okay. And I'm assuming that once you get the final numbers, it's sort of like you're going to do the, quite literally kind of put the math about like, this is how many people were served and...
Yeah. Shelterhouse break out each month of how many nights of shelter was provided for how many people.
Yeah. I mean, it's a...
Now, it's a duplicated account. I don't, they didn't break out like the same person was there for two months, but every night a shelter providing account.
Right, right, right. Yeah. It, I mean, where this seems to be leading is, I mean, it's a horrible calculus to have to sort of look at the cost-benefit analysis of the emergency shelter versus, you know, having 30 years of another, of, you know, a home that is protected from, from, you know, increasing affordability. So...
Yeah, the funds all go to a good purpose.
But it seems to me that that's kind of where this is, is going to a certain extent.
You said 500 people or 5,000?
5,000.
5,000. Do you know how many?
The exact number so far is 5,027.
Is this during only one winter season or?
Just this winter season. So December through...
February.
I have numbers to the end of February. So I don't have the March 1st to March 18th numbers yet.
Oh, that's really bad to hear that we have 5,000 people did not find a list of it.
5,000 nights. So it's sort of like of capacity, right?
So after 15 weeks, 5,000 nights, but it could be this, one person uses their shelter every night.
5,000 nights. And that means 5,000 people?
Not people, right.
My God. Yeah. And you know, like, also, I would love to know how many family, like, individual and family been like housing there.
That I don't know.
Yeah. If you can just get us that number, it would be great. That would give us an idea about like how many people would have that homeless.
One, I, I think one of the issues with the distribution is that you all started this last year?
We started the existing distribution back in fiscal, fiscal year '20. The proposed distribution would start in fiscal year '25.
Okay. I think one of the challenges with this is we, as we all know, winter shelter wasn't a part of the million dollars.
Yeah. It wasn't until fiscal year '25.
Yep.
So then we had to figure out how, how do we incorporate that, since we are funding it now. We've committed to funding it on annual basis.
Yep. Yep. Which I assume that my colleagues are all in agreement with that on an annual basis. Seems to me that, you know, that million-dollar commitment that was made back when I, I think it was made right prior to me being on council, but we voted on it in 2019 for our budget. And I think that's when it became a million-dollar line item that would not be negotiated. It was actually proposed by Mayor Protem, and the council, you know, made that commitment for $1 million. Because the shelter houses being added to what we believed, you know, these services have, they're really good. I wonder if the council wouldn't be amendable to trying to figure out, you know, if we want to commit $1 million to $100,000. I know that there's a 3% increase, the 30,000 that's still there. But I wonder if we wouldn't consider adding that 100,000 so that the winter shelter can be annually a part of this and it not take away from some of the other services that we know have been beneficial to the community and to the housing dilemma that we just finished talking about.
Yeah. I, I think that's a good idea, not only for that. I think the Affordable Housing Fund, this is now, we are funding House Trust Fund. They are also funding people who are doing affordable housing. The affordable housing itself being increased, the, the houses, like I said, costed being increased, rent had been increased, everything had been increased. But our 1 billion sitting there since 2019. I thinks we need to maybe 10% every year to increase it, which is 1,000, $100,000.
Well, and yet, I mean, I know that we've got within the, oh my gosh. Help me out. On Gilbert South, what's that district?
Riverfront Crossing?
Thank you.
We do have Riverfront Crossing.
We have like $4 million in that.
Over 5 million.
5 million. I mean, so it's not, so we do have that million. And I'm, I'm agreeing with you that I think we need to look at, you know, increasing it. But we've also got other areas where we have...
We have other pots of money. So Riverfront Crossings family, we have over 5 million. It can only be used in the Riverfront Crossing district.
In the Riverfront Crossing, yeah.
So we have, we are working with a realtor to identify lots that we can buy and move forward with the project. We have funds under the Foster Road TIF, the Residential TIF for affordable housing that we can be used citywide. And I think there's over 200,000 in that pot of funds. And then we have our CDBG and home allocations that we use. So we have different various pots of funding for different, different affordable housing categories.
Just allocated to different neighborhoods. And I wasn't saying that to you. I know you know that. I meant it more for like the public to, because I think that there is a sense of like, oh, there's only a million dollars for affordable housing, and yet we have it in other areas that are, that are, it's more attached to specific parts of the city. So it was not to you, Mayor Protem.
Yeah. But is, that's also, you know, it's, that's great to have, but that's, that's not budgeting on the year. That's just if we have Fion Lu from somewhere, or if we have TIF somewhere.
Foster Road TIF is a 10-year TIF, so we get about 125,000 each year. And as we get continued development, that'll increase. And that can be used citywide.
Yeah. That, that's what I mean, like, that's, but when we budget something, we're going to have it every year. But those, we're going to depend on like, if we have a project, will we get money out of it? Like, for example, Fion Lu or TIF money or something like that.
Shelterhouse isn't in Riverfront Crossings, is it?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's really close.
No, it doesn't extend past Highway 6.
I hope that 5 dollar, 5,000, 5 million, I mean, to be really used for affordable housing, that will be affordable forever. Like city build, many by how, like something like housing, a number of the organization that housing fellowship and those kind of things. And this is will be in Riverfront Crossing.
It has to be in Riverfront Crossings, and council will have to approve it. So I'm assuming that yes, you will move towards permanent affordability.
Yes, I hope so. Because, you know, those 10 years, affordable 20 years is not, it will go by quickly and we will end up not having anything.
I would, just going back to the conversation brought up by the mayor, I would fully support that. I really don't like the potential long-term effects that bringing down funding for these other important projects and organization might have. So I would, I would fully support either bringing it up to 1.1 million for this upcoming year and then however long that policy is maintained by council, or 1.13, whatever the calculation is. Absolutely.
And I'll also remind council, we don't have to determine where the money comes from. We just have to give that direction to staff.
But, but keep in mind that 50% of whatever you get, it will go, 50% will go to Housing Trust Fund. So if we need to add more, so that can go to Housing Trust Fund and go to the shelter house would be great. I don't know.
They, they get more than 50%, because both the Lytec and the Housing Trust Fund all go to the Housing Trust Fund.
Oh, even the 20% of the...
Yeah. So right now, they get, in our prior, they get 700,000 out of the million. In this one, they would get 650,000 out of the 1.03.
Which is what, I mean, we were used to that. It's not different. I think that the winter shelter coming on just, it's needed. We needed to actually have a contract to have that winter shelter every year. And I'm, I think we benefited from having that contract. And I think, you know, if, I don't know if, you know, there's others that would be supportive, you know, to try to, you know, keep the existing levels where they are. Now, healthy homes, you know, maybe you can speak to that a little bit. The usage of the healthy home funds at 75,000 now is down to 45. If you can just remind us what you mentioned about the usage of those funds.
We're getting less referrals. However, we have assisted the Housing Fellowship meet all their radon mitigation because it was unplanned expense for affordable housing provider. So I think last year, we spent 68,000 of that fund. But we are seeing when we go out to do our regular owner-occupied rehab, or when we're out in mobile home parks doing owner-occupied rehab, that we find it typical that you have a child with asthma or you have an adult with COPD. So we're doing things with the healthy homes funds that aren't allowed under the, or we've capped our federal funds. So we'll do new HVAC, a new air conditioner. We will remove mold, whether it be from like a leaky faucet or we move mold, we, we get rid of old carpet, things that we don't have the budget to do with our federal funds. So we like that flexibility. The reason why I reduce that is because if we do get short of 45,000, we could tap into the opportunity fund too.
Got it. You have another source. Okay. So I would be all right with the healthy home staying at 45, but just making sure that we, you know, just make the other, others whole, which at this point, it would just be the Housing Trust Fund.
I think also like, speaking of our Housing Trust Fund, since they get 70% out of this 1 million, I would love to know like how many permanent affordability of affordable housing they, like accomplish.
For the Housing Trust Fund?
Mm-hmm.
They do submit an annual report that you guys receive every year, probably in January, February.
July.
Huh?
July.
Ellen is behind you mouthing July.
Different jam.
It's a year.
We all look at Ellen.
Now, you could, we did increase money for security deposits. If we are, if there's no claims, we could reduce that back to the 100,000. And then still, security deposits would get more money because we didn't pay out any claims. And so that 30,000 would go to security deposit. So there's some money to move in that category too. And then you'd still increase security deposit assistance, but...
When you receive the Housing Trust Fund report, do you like look at, maybe last July I didn't, I wasn't here, so to look at it. But just do you look at the permanent affordability of like some housing that they accomplish?
We don't require permanent affordability. So typically, you'll see, depends on the amount of assistance per unit. It can go from five, 10, 15, 20 up to 30-year affordability period for a low-income housing tax credit project. But not all project, all units in a Lytec project are at 30, 40% median income. You see a lot of units in a Lytec projects that are 60%. And I know there's been criticism, that's a very high rent at 60%. And sometimes market rate, or the fair market rent can be even cheaper. But you do get a certain percentage of, of units at that 30, 40, that'd be affordable for that 30-year period.
I don't know, but I really love to have permanent affordability. You know, maybe, I don't know. We want to see that increasing because the price is really going high, growing crazy every year. Now two bedroom is $900. So it's...
If you can find that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's hard to do permanent affordability unless you're, you're providing a project debt-free. If it's debt-free, then all the rents that you collect go into the ongoing maintenance. How much debt a housing project incurs or how much they have really depends on how long it can be affordable for.
Yeah. Maybe the Housing Trust Fund will figure it out. So, yeah. Some project could be better off of it, or something like build, city-owned things or Housing Trust Fund-owned things.
So I'm just trying to put some numbers together here, just so that I think I understand what we're talking about.
Sure.
And so I'm just going to go over this. So what we are potentially directing is, and that's my understanding, is 500,000 for Housing Trust Fund for the first section, 200,000 for Housing Trust Fund for the second section, 75,000 for the opportunity fund, 45,000 for healthy homes, 100,000 for Housing Placement Services, 50,000 emergent, and 100,000 winter shelters. That what everyone's talking about, or where am I?
I think we would do the 110.
110?
Yeah. Increase.
For the housing?
Mm-hmm. Housing.
I thought it was more simple that it was, that the mayor had suggested that we direct staff to find $100,000 to just add to it, that it would be 1.13.
Yeah. And, and, right. A, a part of the, you know, how this all came up is that winter shelter came with $100,000 addition to this. But if we were to look at where the deficit is, because there is $50,000. Everything else has increased. There's a 3% of 30,000. So we, so I think what I'm proposing is more of a $50,000 fine.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
But I, I really would like, I wasn't know that we're going to be, but I, I want to talk about the 70,000 security deposit. You know, the, the Crisis Center, the Community Crisis Center is really doing amazing job of doing this. But you know, like, I, I refer people there to get this $1,000. But now they are out of it. They are, they are out for six months later from you give them the fund. So the need is great out there. And I, I would really see, and if, if the, the, the medication risk that it's all, now it's a pilot program, you guys are examining to know what it is, and we cannot refer more people. I think we should increase of 70,000 to 100,000 for security deposit, because only cover them six months and they are out. I call them like the other day, they are out.
Right now, if you're, if you're talking about the distribution post that we're proposing, since we've not used any of the 30,000 in landlord risk mitigation funds, that 30,000 would be added to the 80,000 security. So they'd be getting 120,000. So that is money in addition. So if you wanted to play with that money, that's on the table. So it's because we're not allocating that 30,000 to Shelterhouse again, because there's been no claims taken. So you have, you have some flexibility of where you put that 30,000. Because you've already upped it 10,000, so it's at 80,000.
So when can they use the 30,000?
July 1st, this upcoming July 1st.
And what about right now?
Well, you've not proposed the budget. Or you're not approved the budget, so.
You're saying that there's no more funds and they're depleted.
Yes, since January.
They're depleted right now.
They are, yeah.
That would, that would be a budget amendment for fiscal year 24. That wouldn't be a budget amendment for fiscal year 25, which this is applicable to fiscal year 25, correct?
This is fiscal year 25.
Yeah, so it's a different conversation.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I forget that even this is for 25.
Yeah, so this will start July 1st. So we, we enter a contract with Community Crisis Service, we did a five-year agreement. So after this year, we have to do another RFP for a pro, for a basically a nonprofit to run the program. I'm sure Community Crisis Service will apply again to run the program, but yes. They, they do run out before June 30th typically.
And the, the emergency fund from last year, do we have money still there, because?
We have only 9,500 right now. In the emergent situation, because we, we spent money on United Action for Youth Transitional Living Program and 7,500 to Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and so we only have 9,500 available.
Tell us about the Big Brothers, Big Sisters program.
It's in your, for emergency funding, it's kind of your catch-all. We don't budget for it anywhere else. It's typically housing related, but since Big Brothers, Big Sisters, they had an emergency, they applied for emergency funds, because the Johnson County Ag Extension, they can no longer go under their insurance, so they had to create a nonprofit, like within like, I can't remember the time period, but like 10 weeks. So it was very sudden, and they were having a hard time even finding insurance. And I think it's because they serve youth in mentoring, that insurance premiums are very high, so we.
And they disconnected, I think, from the, the state.
From the United State, yeah.
Yeah. The state disconnected from them, I think.
Correct, yeah.
So it, it's a pot of funds that's available for crisis, like I said, it happened suddenly, was beyond their control, and they can't wait for another funding source to kick in.
So I kind of want to bring the council back to what, what, what people are thinking as far as the proposal of $50,000 for the staff to add it, so to be 180, oh, I'm sorry, 1,080,000 dollars is there?
Yes.
Okay.
For which one?
Um, we're gonna add for fiscal year 2025 for this. So it'd be adding an additional 50,000 that I see the majority of council is directing staff to do at this time.
50 or 100?
50, we only need 50 more.
Yeah, but also we need to talk about the 30,000 giving it to the security deposit since they are not using it.
That's where she said there's the wiggle room that they can.
They can, or do we have to approve it?
No, it's gonna automatically happen on July 1st.
On July 1st, it automatically happens.
They'll have 120,000 for the security deposit and not, yeah.
For the risk mitigation.
Yeah, we've already authorized, we've already paid shelter house the 30,000 for fiscal year 24. So that money's gone, so it would have to be effective July 1st.
And since it's not used, it switches over, which is great.
In 25, it'll switch?
Yes.
Is that right?
On July, the July of this year.
I think then Jeff would have just tweak however he tweaks the budget for your fiscal year 25 that you've not approved yet.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other items from March 25th? I do know that we have our joint entities meeting on March, I'm sorry, April 15th. Are there any agenda items that council want to put on for that meeting?
Oh, the 15th is joint entity meeting.
It'll be Monday, April 15th.
Yeah. No, I, I saw, we have a city council meeting, it's the same day.
Oh, no, no, this'll be Monday. Here and none, it will be at Iowa City, and so I'm sure there's, if something should come up, I think we still have time to.
Can we just email Kelly?
Email Kelly, we will still need to have at least, you know, Mayor Protem and I to kind of also agree on that topic. All right, we'll go on to item number four, which is University of Iowa Student Government Updates, USG. Welcome.
Hi, Council. All right, so first off, we'll start with our big student government news. USG elections happened last week. We have a whole bunch, I believe 40 senators in total. Next year, Addison Eckard, the current Speaker of the Senate, and Brenda Ramirez, Director of External Relations, will be the new President and Vice President of Student Government. They'll be working on building their cabinet in the next coming weeks.
Iowa men's basketball delivered an upset to LSU on, what night was it? Was that just last night? It was a great night in Iowa City. They will move on to the Final Four, March Madness playing UConn on Friday. Tomorrow is Hawkeye Caucus Day, where a bunch of Iowa staff representatives and USG will go to the Iowa State Capitol to lobby for more funding, building connections with legislators, and a lot more than that.
Awesome, I also just wanted to inform the council that this is my second-to-last council session. I'll have a more soppy speech next week, obviously, or next session, I guess. But that being said, if you have any recommendations or questions for the renters guide that you still have or haven't heard yet, please let me know, I'm working on that as my last initiative.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you both, all right. We're on to item number five, which is council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees. I think. Yeah. I, I just wanted to bring up that, I think Iowa City, I'm on the DMO, they're doing lots of great things here throughout the community. The biggest thing that will be happen, happening is the Hercules that's gonna be going across the entire city. That is also a fundraiser, and they'll be placing some of the proceeds into various local not-for-profit businesses, so just happy for that opportunity. Other than that, they, in those meetings, cities do give updates. Typically, it's current events, road updates, that type stuff. But just wanted to report out on that. All right, here and nothing else, we are going to be adjourned until 6:00 PM for our formal meeting, so see you soon.